Good morning. It's eight o'clock. I'm going to call this town meeting to order right now. Please. Will you please join me in rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Mr. Carroll, the moderator, is unable to attend this morning's meeting. And he's a little bit under the weather, doesn't feel well, so I know we all wish him well. I would like to now entertain a motion to... I would like to now entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Thomas A. Mullen as temporary town administrator. Motion, please. I mean town moderator. Jesus. Hey, I'm sorry. I apologize to just about everybody. Go ahead.
A. Mullen is temporary town moderator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mullen, would you please come to the podium? And if you will raise your right hand, please. I, Thomas Mullen...
I, Thomas Mullen...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform...
All the duties incumbent...
All the duties incumbent...
Upon me...
Upon me...
As temporary town moderator for November 18th, 2023.
As temporary moderator for November 18th, 2023.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
Understanding...
Understanding...
Agreeable to the rules and regulations...
Agreeable to the rules and regulations...
Of the constant constitution...
Of the constitution...
The laws of this Commonwealth...
And the laws of this Commonwealth...
And the bylaws of the town of Wakefield...
And the bylaws of the town of Wakefield.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Tommy, I have the return of service and the warrant for you and the list of the out-of-town...
I think I've got all that.
Here are the out-of-town...
Yep. I have with me the return of service and the warrant, and I will read it briefly. Return of service. I, Constable Kevin Lopes, hereby certify that I have posted the regular town meeting warrant of November 18th, 2023. On October 20, 2023, Kevin Lopes, Constable, received by Betsy Sharon, Town Clerk. The following non-Wakefield voters are in attendance, and unless there is objection, I will allow them to remain. Neil Zolos, Chris Pierce, Kathy Cheek, Sherry Dalton, Dan McGrath, Ben DeChristophero, Craig Calabrese, Lou Perillo, Amy Forziati, Dennis Fazio, Peter Dion, Joe Conway, and Karen Burke. Is there any objection? Seeing none, they will be allowed to remain in attendance. Let us turn then to the first of the seven articles in today's town meeting. Article one is to see if the town will hear and accept a report of the fiscal year 2023 budget, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
Right now? That the town vote to accept a report of the fiscal year 2023 budget.
Second.
Thank you. Fall town meeting provides a wonderful opportunity for your team at Town Hall to reflect upon the events of the past year. Specifically, we evaluate how your team handled the challenges which came our way from the economic, social, and political sectors. I am proud to say that with your support, we as a town continue to face all challenges and hopefully go stronger and wiser. It has been said that calm seas do not create a good sailor, and we certainly have weathered storms the past few years. However, I am pleased to report that due to the thoughtful development and implementation of sound financial policies by the Town Council, Finance Committee, and School Committee, and most importantly, the support of the public, Wakefield steadily remains on course for what continues to be a brighter future. Part of remaining on course is adherence to our quite dry, some would say boring, financial policies, which include such guidelines as limiting the use of non-recurring revenue sources and planning models, maintaining adequate reserves, and avoiding volatile revenue projections when balancing budgets. But it's equally important to note that Wall Street and its rating agencies are also reviewing municipalities' commitment to quality of life issues. While in the past only pure financial columns were discussed at our bond meetings, now the analysis pivots to mental health services, especially in our police departments, which was and remains way ahead of other area departments in this area, mental wellness commitments through our Health and Human Services Department, as well as commitment to affordable housing and green energy. The town's continued adherence to financial policies are critical, but quality of life is now part of the rubric. And I am so pleased to report that Wakefield, excuse me, continues to maintain the highest bond rating AAA from Wall Street. This lofty designation saves hundreds of thousands, maybe millions of dollars, taxpayer dollars, on our capital projects as we're able to borrow at lower interest rates. In fact, assuming a modest quality spread of 20 basis points, roughly a quarter of a point between AAA and AA, the town of Wakefield has saved approximately $1 million in bond interest over the past few borrowings. I for one would much rather have that money in our pockets than on Wall Street's. And I would say that Wakefield also has a positive future outlook, which actually is higher than the federal government, so kudos to the town of Wakefield. As we discussed last month at the tri-board meeting, and in order to maintain our high bond rating and adequate reserves, we will certainly need to make sound and prudent decisions over the next few budget cycles in particular. I assure you that our elected and appointed committees are up to the challenge. So today, we will request the town utilize about $1.000,000 in free cash to balance the fiscal year '24 budget, a portion of which will be under the two-and-a-half limit, so we can leave some money in the taxpayers' pockets. Articles three, four, and five will fund the fair contract settlements for our exceptional police and fire departments. Article six will increase tax exemptions for blind veterans, seniors, and surviving spouses. And finally, Article seven will ask the town to adopt the stretchier energy code to reduce our carbon footprint, both helping the planet and creating a more efficient use of energy. I remain completely proud of your town employees who have answered all the challenges over the last fiscal year, and I think we have emerged stronger and more efficient with much better systems delivering services to the public. So on behalf of the Town Council, all municipal and school department employees, I wish to thank the townspeople for their continued support, but today we have a little bit of business to do. So now on to the financial aspects of the report. Because Wakefield continues to be a community where many people wish to work, visit, and live, we have experienced another year of exceptional growth. Last year's new growth closed to $2.5 million as we finally will receive the new taxes generated by the underground power line. Certainly, our financial picture is much brighter, one might say electrified by this development. I thought I'd get a laugh on that. Don't you get a laugh on that? The revenue generated from the local options, meals, and hotel taxes has exceeded our predictions, generating $429,000 in meals tax and $610,000 in hotel for a total of a little over $1 million. We had projected $725,000. We collected $807,000 in fiscal year '22, and a pre-COVID year would have been around $900,000. So we are back on track, and we are on pace to achieve that this year, as we have collected over $327,000 for the first quarter of fiscal year '24. Our free cash balance has been certified by the Department of Revenue at $8,581,135. Our long-range forecast indicates stable free cash for foreseeable future. The value of our comprehensive stabilization fund currently stands at over $3.3 million, double where we were in 2008. And the OPED balance comes in at a little over $29 million. And that was again as of last fiscal year close, which was June 30th, 2023. As promised, we increased capital spending last year, spending $2.2 million on new projects. And between new projects and debt service payments, we utilized around 5% of our operating budget to improve our infrastructure. We all realize we need to do more, but this is a good start and is embedded in our budget process. I wish to thank the department heads, town employees, the superintendent of schools, who is ill, not with us today, but we do have our deputy superintendent here, Finance Committee, and especially the Town Council for their assistance and leadership this past year. So again, in accordance with the requirements, the Wakefield Home Charter, I am extremely pleased to present the fiscal year 2023 report for the town of Wakefield. The report is included in the town meeting booklet and has been on the town website for a couple of weeks. I am happy to report that all town departments managed to stay within or actually expend less than their respective appropriations. Certain departments have also encumbered funds from last year's budget for ongoing projects or bills carried over to the next fiscal year. Due to the efforts of our department heads and employees, $2,441,222 was returned to the town last year. And accordingly, as I mentioned, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts certified free cash at the amount of $8,581,135 as of June 30th, 2023. Also, a little over $1.2 million, actually closer to $1.3 million, was encouraged, was encumbered to be expended in fiscal year '24. And also, the water and sewer enterprise accounts ended the year in a positive manner. So now to address some of the specific areas and departments, and this is in the booklet if you were able to get it when you came in today. And we'll start with general government. The general government portion of the budget includes the Town Council budget, accounting, IT, treasurer, legal, tax collector, assessor, town clerk, election registration and expenses, Finance Committee, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and Board of Appeals. This section, Section General Government, represents approximately 3% of our budgets, or about $2.7 million. These departments returned a total of $160,231 to the town, or 6% of their approved operating budgets. Each individual department is broken down in the report. General Government also encumbered $12,451 to be used in fiscal year '24. The highlights of that are $12,000 for the audit in our finance, in our accounting department. Protections of persons and property. This area concerns police and fire, fire alarms, traffic lights, building, animal control, parking clerk, and emergency management. As a group, these budgets represent approximately 14% of our overall budget, or close to $14 million. These departments, despite a number of retirements and increased calls due to the state of economy and really the mental health of the world right now, managed to return $40,822.12 to the town bottom line. Also, $4,800 was encumbered to cover the cost of an emergency intern, which will complete some Tier Two assessments this fiscal year. The Town Council and I believe the whole community remain grateful for all the hard work of our first responders, especially during this time. And actually, I do, and I think a lot of us do, pray for their safety every day. Human services. The human services area consists of the Council on Aging, which manages our senior center, the Health Department, the Recreation Department, and the Veterans Department. These departments have returned $166,961 to the town on a budget of little over $1 million, or approximately 16% of their budgeted amount. The Public Works Department, despite their seemingly infinite calls for service, returned $174,309 to the town for normal operations, as well as $147,202.45 from snow and ice operations. And I did see Director Conway in here. You haven't spent any money yet this year on snow and ice, have you, Joe? Where is he? Not yet. Okay, thank you. Keep it up. I applaud the hard work and results offered by this department. DPW also encumbered a little over $812,000 for ongoing capital projects. These projects include $160,000 for stormwater fieldwork as part of our NIPD's projects, as we would not build last fiscal year, $30,700 for roofwork, which is extended in fiscal year '24, $87,000 for sidewalks and drainage repair, also completed in '24, fiscal '24, $5,400 for trees ordered but not received until this fiscal year, and $528,000 for capital projects, which extended into '24, including, this kind of caught my eye in here, $115,000 for a new pickup slash plow, which was actually delayed to us due to the UAW strike. The water and sewer enterprise accounts also ended the year in black, returning 4% of their budgets, or $388,000, which will be kept and retained earnings in those accounts, and that actually helps keep water and sewer rates down as we go forward. The encumbrances in this area are for infrastructure improvements, including pressure valves, water mains, and infiltration reduction work, which were also completed in fiscal year '24. Education. The education portion of the budget includes the School Department, Library, and Vocational Schools. These departments all completed the year within budget and returned $423,847.45 to the town and carried forward $461,783.62. And questions on any of the Wakefield Public Schools items can be directed to Deputy Superintendent Ms. Morrow, who is here with us today. The remainder of the budget lines consist of non-department or unclassified expenses, particularly in the area of insurance. As a group, this section returned $184,000 to the town. Again, the biggest return to the town occurred in the area of group health insurance, returning a little over $1.1 million. And this is because as the mix of the specific health plans chosen by employees and retirees produced lower costs. And for those that you don't know, Wakefield is in the GIC, the Group Insurance Commission, which is a state, we got into the state about 2008, 2009, and there's a lot of different plans in there. It's not just one carrier. So it's an absolutely great job by HR departments as they work with every individual in the town to make sure that they get the best plan that is cost-effective for them and cost-effective for the town. And really, as a whole, Wakefield has kept the cost of health insurance at an increase of less than 3% over the last few years, and many times around 2%. And I think those numbers stack up great when you look at some of the national averages out there. So kudos to Amy Benedetto Forziati and Karen Dusset for all their hard work. And I say this every year, and they prove me wrong. I do not anticipate large returns like this again, but it's not a challenge for another year. For fiscal year '23, the following amounts were transferred from the Reserve Fund: $10,500 for Board of Appeals costs, $12,250 for the Conservation Commission, $52,380 for Fire Department salaries, $2,160 for fire alarms, $1,405 for insurance premiums, $7,785 for legal expenses and damages, $28,500 for Medicare, $85,235 for vocational schools, $6,500 for professional medical, $17,070 for Town Clerk salaries, $11,585 for Treasurer salaries, and $164,630 of our $400,000 Reserve Fund was returned to the town. I want to thank you and thank the audience. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This concludes my report. I also want to thank my administrative assistant, Sherry Dalton, who put this wonderful book together and got everything organized today. And we actually print these booklets ourselves now. We used to have to go out to print and spend about $3,000 or $4,000 on it. Now, I think we spend a couple of reams of paper, which is much cheaper for the community. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is there any further discussion on Article one? Seeing none, we are ready for a vote. All those in favor of accepting the report for the fiscal year 2023 budget, please raise your hand. Thank you. All opposed, please raise your hand. The vote passes. I have this supplementary list of non-Wakefield voters in attendance. Todd Bowen, Catherine Hewitt, Bill Renaud, Ali Atui, and Anthony Tui. Is there any objection to any of those individuals remaining with us this morning? Seeing none, they will be permitted to remain. Let's move on to Article two, which is to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to use such free cash as may be in the Treasury or any part thereof in computing the tax rate for fiscal period ending June 30, 2024, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town authorized the Board of Assessors to use $1,517,037 in free cash in commuting the tax rate for fiscal year 2024.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The purpose of this article is to allow $1,517,037 of free cash to be used in setting the fiscal year 2024 tax rate. This amount is necessary to offset the budget to enable the town to be within the allowable tax levy under two and a half. And as you may be aware, and I mention this every year, our submission to the State Department of Revenue reflects very conservative use of non-tax levy income in order to be in compliance with Department of Revenue parameters, as well as carefully, and maybe more importantly, positioning us in light of any unexpected downturns in the economy. This conservative revenue calculation, as well as the very prudent efforts and results of our department heads in the managing of their budget, has led to a consistent growth in our reserves. In fact, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, as I mentioned, certified our free cash to be $8,581,135 as of June 30th, 2023. After the use of $1,517,037 to offset this year's budget, as well as the anticipated use of $525,000 necessary to fund our police and fire collective bargaining contracts, we'll have free cash balance of approximately $6.5 million, a comprehensive stabilization fund of around $3.3 million, and as well as a so far untapped fiscal year '24 Reserve Fund for $400,000, for a total of around $10.3 million in reserves, miles ahead of the $1.8 million we had in 2008. As you may be aware, the Town Council adopted a financial policy in 2012. This policy establishes guidelines surrounding revenue forecasting, budgeting for operations and capital, as well as adequacy of reserves. In December of 2022, the Town Council amended the policy to ensure that reserves can be used under certain conditions rather than using the tax levy when balancing the budget. The goal is to leave more money in the citizens' pockets. I am happy to say, as we have for a number of years in the past without the policy, in fiscal year '24, we will not tax to the entire 2.5 levy, leaving about $267,000 of untaxed money in the hands of the taxpayers. The effect on the average taxpayer is not huge, probably $31 for the average residential property, $89 for the average commercial, but I do believe that every bit helps. So when you run all the numbers and put it through the old calculator I have with the tape at my desk, it comes out to about 2.38%. And I am very proud of the Town Council and proud of this town to actually leave some money back with the taxpayers and not always go to the max. So the Town Council unanimously recommends favorable action on this article, and you will hear now from the Finance Committee, who will also recommend, I believe.
Mr. Sullivan for the Finance Committee.
Yes, the Finance Committee does recommend favorable action.
Is there any other discussion on Article two? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the main motion under Article two, please raise your hand. Thank you. All opposed, raise your hand. The article passes. I should notice, I should note that all of the articles that we will deal with today require a majority vote. Turning to Article three, it is to see if the town will vote to implement collective bargaining agreements between the town of Wakefield and the Wakefield Firefighters Union, Local 1478 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, for the period of July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2026, and to provide therefore that the town raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to carry out the purpose of this article, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town vote to implement a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wakefield and the Wakefield Firefighters Union, Local 1478 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, for the period of July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2026, and to provide therefore that the town supplement the fire personal services account from free cash the amount of $250,000.
Second.
Thank you. The next, this article and the next two articles after this have to do with contracts of our public safety personnel, police, and fire. And I just want to say to thank the Town Council for all their support in the negotiation process. And I do want to thank the unions and our members therein. They, we had, negotiations are never easy. You know, we're always apart. We try to come together, but I do appreciate in both the police and fire, the professionalism and the cordiality that we shared during these negotiation sessions. And we started, I went back in my notes for town meeting, we started back in January. My fault, didn't get it ready for fall town, for spring town meeting last year, but we're here today, and the reason why it's free cash is because we already set the budget for this year, if there's any confusion there. So I am pleased to present the contract settlement for the 53 members of our fire department to you this evening. This contract is a compilation of many meetings, as I said, and I believe that we have reached a fair and equitable settlement for both our firefighters as well as the taxpayer. This is a three-year contract, which will expire on June 30, 2026. The highlights of this contract include cost of living increases consistent with all other units on the town side being 2.5% fiscal year '23, 2.5% for fiscal year '24, and 2.5% for fiscal year '25. There is a 1% increase on educational designations each fiscal year, and a 1.5% increase in medical designations each year, which is split in six-month intervals, so be 3/4% on July 1st, 3/4% on January 1st. Again, I think this is a fair and reasonable contract. It contains continued compliance with national incident management standards, which is necessary for grants and helps us get a lot of grants, and it follows federally established best practices. Most importantly, we continue to receive the best practices in delivery of services to our citizens and guests, and we certainly owe a huge debt of gratitude to our dedicated men and women of our fire department. Just as an aside, the fire department completed close to 4,400 calls last year and is on pace, I think, to overtake that this year. Right, Chief? More than 4,400, easy. So a great job by our fire department, and the Town Council moves favorable action on this article.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, we do, Acting Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Is there any further discussion on Article three? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All in favor of the main motion under Article three, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. All opposed, please raise your hand. The article passes. It's a struggle to keep non-voters out of here. There's a new one. We've got a new one. Michael Rossi is here. Anybody object to his presence? Seeing none, he is welcome to attend. Article four is to see if the town will vote to implement collective bargaining agreements between the town of Wakefield... between the Town of Wakefield and the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, Wakefield Division, for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-three, to June thirty, two thousand twenty-six, and to provide therefore that the town raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to carry out the purposes of this article, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town vote to implement a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wakefield and the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, Wakefield Division, for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-three, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, and to provide therefore that the, that the town supplement the police personal services account by the transfer from free cash the amount of one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Excellent. Okay. Discussion, Mr. Mayo.
Thank you very much. Again, I am very pleased to present to you the contracts for both the Police Patrolmen's Union and, in the next article, the Police Supervisors Union. Uh, although they are two separate unions within the police department, they bargain together, so the terms are exactly the same for each, each union. Um, their current, uh, contract expired on June thirtieth of this year, and this is also a three-year contract, so this will expire in June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. The highlights of this contract are very similar to the fire department. Cost of living increases, um, of two point five percent for each fiscal year, seven one twenty-three, seven one twenty-four, and seven one twenty-five. One percent each year to compensate for the increased mental health burdens on police today, not only in training, but on their own mental health. Um, and one and a half each year, split in six-month individuals, for continued accreditation, uh, post-re requirements, which is merit-based. As we all may be aware, the police department is one of the few departments in the state, few police departments in the state, that is recognized following a best-practice set of policies and procedures, and I'm very proud of the work which our office did to receive this designation, um, and that they continue to do, because their work does not stop there. The police department must continue to adhere to these standards to maintain this distinction. As we go forward, um, I personally, and I speak to the chief and the deputy chief about this a lot, are very concerned that because of the high-quality offices that we have, and that we enjoy in this community, that they are ripe for picking from other communities. We invest a lot in training our officers on the police and on the fireside, and to lose any of them to our surrounding community means we invest time and taxpayer money in training the replacement, as well as covering the shifts with overtime. So I believe this is, again, a good and fair contract for both the town and the union, as it sets a very sustainable standard for, for cost of living increases across all our departments, as well as treats our police department very fairly. I am so grateful for the unbelievable commitment displayed by our, uh, police department in all areas, from the chief and deputy chief, all down to their newest recruits. Um, they show nothing but professionalism and fair treatment to all, and they keep us safe every day. This was also unanimously supported by the Town Council, and now we'll hear from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Is there any discussion, any further discussion on Article Four? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Four, please so signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Any opposed, please raise your hand. The article passes. We are on to Article Five, which is to see if the town will vote to implement collective bargaining agreements between the Town of Wakefield and the Wakefield Police Superior Officers Association for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-three, to June thirty, two thousand twenty-six, and to provide therefore that the town raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to carry out the purpose of this article, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town vote to implement a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wakefield and the Wakefield Police Superior Officers Association for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-three, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, and to provide therefore that the town supplement the police personal services account by the transfer from free cash the amount of ninety thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you very much. Uh, this contract covers the period from July first, two thousand twenty-three, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, and although voted separately here today because it's two separate unions, the, the contract is exactly the same as the one I just described in Article Four, and again, my sincere gratitude to our police department.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation, Mr. Sullivan?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Is there any further discussion under Article Five? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Five, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The article passes. We are on to Article Six, which is to see if the town will vote to accept General Laws, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, C and a half, which provides for an additional real estate exemption for taxpayers who are granted personal exemptions on their domiciles under General Laws, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, including certain blind persons, veterans, surviving spouses, and seniors, and to provide that the additional exemption shall be up to one hundred percent of the personal exemption, to be effective for the exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July one, two thousand twenty-four, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town accept General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, C and a half, which provides for the additional real estate tax exemption for taxpayers who are granted personal exemptions on their domiciles under General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, including certain blind persons, veterans, surviving spouses, and seniors, and provides an additional exemption up to one hundred percent of the personal exemption to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Moderator. Uh, our town assessor, Victor Santanello, will make a few comments at this point.
My name is Victor Santanello. I'm the town assessor. Uh, passage of this article will allow the town, through its Board of Assessors, to change, uh, the rates for statutory exemptions for our disabled veterans, surviving spouses, uh, par, veteran, uh, paraplegics, hundred percent disabled veterans and blind persons. And i- in, in, in passage, the Board of Assessors would be able to grant exemptions doubling the, doubling the amounts.
Uh, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, the Finance Committee does recommend favorable action.
Is there any further discussion under Article Six? Seeing none, we are ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Six, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The motion passes. We are on to Article Seven, and you will be delighted to know I'm not going to read the whole thing. Suffice it to say that Article Seven is to adopt the Specialized Energy Code. Is there a motion? And I look to Melissa Yuzden. Would you please introduce yourself?
Melissa Yuzden, Chair of the Wakefield Environmental Sustainability Committee. I motion that the town vote to replace Chapter one eighty of the general bylaws with a new Chapter one eighty entitled Specialized Energy Code for the purpose of regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use of energy and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions pursuant to the entirety of two hundred and twenty-five CMR, twenty-two and twenty-three, including appendices RC and CC, and also including all future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto, with an effective date of July first, two thousand twenty-four, as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
And before we go on for any discussion, I want to note that the motion you just heard reflects a very minor change from the motion that's printed in the booklet. We are avoiding the rescission of the stretch energy code because, uh, first, we legally cannot revoke, uh, that code. It was adopted within the past three years, and under Chapter Four, Section Four-B of the general laws, you have to wait at least three years to do that. And more significantly, we never really needed to rescind it anyway. As you will hear, the Specialized Energy Code is something that's added to the existing stretch energy code. It does not replace it. Uh, I hope that explains the change in the terms of the motion. May I ask, uh, do you anticipate a presentation that's going to last longer than five minutes?
That's about ten minutes.
Ten minutes. Okay. Um, we have a bylaw limiting discussion for, by any one person to five minutes. Is there any objection to allowing the proponents, uh, ten minutes to make their presentation? Yes, sir. Okay, one, one person, uh, objects. Is there, um, is there any discussion as to whether to allow the, um, extension of the time for debate? Yes, sir. Please come to the mic.
Tom Miller, I live at Eighteen Park Avenue. I would just ask that we follow the general procedure of five minutes allowed for any discussion. Otherwise, if additional times needed for other discussants, that time also be afforded to them.
Okay. And is there any other discussion on the question of whether to extend the period of debate?
Uh, my recessions, Forty Richardson Street. Um, I, I believe the proponent is a representative of the, of the Town Environmental Sustainability Committee. They spent a lot of time talking about this developing, this development, this option. Um, and I think we, as a body, should get to hear the full, um, articulation and understanding of why we should consider this motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on the question of extending debate? Uh, seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of allowing a ten minutes for the proponents to make their case, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The, uh, motion to extend debate passes. I note that there is one individual who is asking to be heard separately. Please state your name and address.
Bob McLaughlin, three seventy-six Water Street. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move to propose, uh, to postpone the motion indefinitely.
So you're making a motion for indefinite postponement of Article Seven?
Exactly.
Okay. Uh, that is a motion that is in order if it is seconded. Is it seconded? Yes, I see a second. All right. You, you may be heard, uh, uh, under, under our bylaws, we must dispose of any motion to, for indefinite postponement before proceeding to the main motion. A motion, a, a vote in favor of indefinite postponement would mean that we would not consider Article Seven at this time. Uh, it would, uh, not be considered at this town meeting. Uh, Mr. McLaughlin, did you wish to speak on your motion?
Yes, just briefly, um, this is a very complicated article that's in front of us right now. Um, I would suggest that we have a, uh, at least one or two or three public forums sometime between now and the spring town meeting, and bring it back in the spring. Again, this is a very complicated article, uh, with a lot of ramifications, um, up or down, and, uh, that would be my suggestion. Uh, it's, uh, um, as a electrician that, uh, deals with codes, and I've been doing it for over fifty years, uh, this code could change. Uh, if it was passed, uh, within three years, they update these codes. So what we're voting on, uh, even, even if we knew every single aspect of this, this article and the codes that are, that are entitled, that are in this, um, uh, proposal, I would, uh, I would just inform everybody that it could change. A lot of this stuff changes in, in, in the next, in, in another three-year cycle. So we don't really know what the hell we're voting for, to be honest with you. So I would, uh, I would suggest that we do some homework on this and bring it back in the spring. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the motion for indefinite postponement? Yes, ma'am.
Marcy McCauley, thirty-two Walden Road. Um, I agree with Mr. McLaughlin. This is a very, um, broad, uh, article, and it needs, the town needs more time to do research, to understand it. Every time I open, um, something about Wakefield, I see affordable housing, and I don't see how this is going to help us with affordable housing. On our street, there was a house listed, um, this summer, I believe it was listed for five ninety-nine. Uh, Steve, I think I saw you there with your kids, checking it out. Uh, it was good to see you. And, uh, it sold for six sixty-five. It's a very small little house. It's eleven hundred square feet. So I think before we start giving away, in a really quick decision, what we want to do to, um, have more affordable housing, or to understand what we're voting on, we do need more time. I agree with Mr. McLaughlin. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tom Betcher, twenty-five Wakefield Ave. I'm also one of the, uh, Wakefield Gas and Light Commissioners. I'm speaking on my, my behalf. Uh, I would like to, uh, implore this body to hear this article and this presentation, and to vote, uh, to hear this. A lot of the concerns will be addressed within this. Uh, actually, one of the, this only impacts new construction, and there are things in here that would help for, uh, home affordability. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Joy Goslin, twenty-three West Water Street. I also would like to hear what is said before we determine whether or not it is too complicated to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion for indefinite postponement? Yes, ma'am.
Deborah Fox, twelve Alyssa Drive. I am against the motion being voted on today. You're saying that it's just for new construction, therefore it would affect contractors. That's not true. I believe it also goes for renovations. So if you have an older home, you could be stuck paying a lot of extra money to make relatively minor changes. Also, is this going to affect the building of the high school in the Volk? Is it going to cost us more money?
Ma'am, ma'am, uh, that goes to the merits. If we get to Article Seven on the merits, those are good questions to ask, but right now, we're just arguing about whether we want to proceed and talk about Article Seven at all.
Okay, I'm against talking about it because people don't have enough information in the public. They're not here today, and I think this was slipped right in quickly, push, push, push. All of a sudden, it's here for a vote. I vote against having the motion today.
Yes.
Sophia Goslin Smosky, twenty-three West Water Street. I didn't plan on talking today, but, um, I think it's irresponsible to say that this issue is too complicated to vote on today when we haven't even heard anything about it yet, and that is why we voted to allow an extension for the time to be talked about it, because it may be a complicated issue. But if you read Article Seven in the brochure that was given, it's on new construction, and for people that have done research beforehand, this is something that other towns in Massachusetts will be adopting in order to combat climate change, which is an urgent issue. So pushing this would be very irresponsible of the town for something that Massachusetts and other towns will be doing. So I think that we should talk about it today and hear what our, um, town member has to say. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Scott McCauley, thirty-two Walden Road. Um, has this IECC report been published to the general public to review in advance in totality, so that we could have read it before today?
Uh, that's a question to the committee, is it?
Which report?
So you're, you're, you're changing this, the IECC standards? Has, has that in totality been released to the public to be able to review before today?
Yes, it has.
And, and how is that done?
It's done through the IECC, which is a, a board for building codes. Um, we do have, uh, a consultant from D U E R that can better explain those codes, if you would allow us to present, um, the Article Seven.
No, what I want to ask is, so, those codes are probably available through their organization, but have those been presented to Wakefield in the totality to the voters of Wakefield, like through the item, or through the Wakefield website, to be able to review these changes?
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna call, uh, call a halt to this. The answer to your question is that all of the material has been on file with the Wakefield Town Clerk for weeks now. We've made sure of that.
Okay.
Uh, what's more, you may have valid points about the, those codes, but that gets into the merits, and that's only to be reached if we deal with Article Seven. Right now, we're just dealing with the question, do we want to talk about it?
But if they've been on file with the clerk, has that been made available to the public?
When something is with the clerk's office, that means it's available to the public. Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion limited to the question of indefinite postponement? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, which would mean we do not discuss Article 7 at this town meeting, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. All those opposed to the motion for indefinite postponement, please raise your hand. Thank you. The motion for indefinite postponement fails. We are on Article 7.
Mr. Mullen, can I just ask that Michael Rossi come on to give us some questions?
Is Mr. Rossi a Wakefield voter?
He's on the list of candidates.
Okay. There's been a request for Mr. Michael Rossi, who is not a Wakefield voter, to speak on the subject.
Yeah, he's a DOER consultant.
He's a consultant with the Mass Department of Energy Resources. Is there any opposition? I see none, therefore Mr. Rossi is allowed to speak.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this. I'm Tiana Veldwijk, Vice Chair of the Wakefield Environmental Sustainability Committee, and here to tell you about warrant Article Number 7 related to the Specialized Energy Code, which has been submitted by the Environmental Sustainability Committee. I need to move this to the next slide. Yes. What is Article 7? This is a proposal to adopt the Specialized Energy Code for new construction only, which is an expansion of Wakefield's already adopted Stretch Energy Building Code. The proposal is to adopt this new code with an effective date of July 1, 2024. The Environmental Sustainability Committee recommends adoption of this code because it enforces energy-efficient building practices for new construction and puts Wakefield on a path to meet the state's climate goals. There are three different building codes in Massachusetts. The first, at the bottom of this pyramid, oh, good, is the Base Code, which applies to new construction, additions, and renovations, and is currently only used in 50 or so towns and has minimal requirements for building energy efficiency. Next, in blue, is the Stretch Energy Code, which has been adopted by all 277 towns and cities in the state's Green Communities Program. Wakefield adopted this Stretch Energy Code in May of 2021 as one of several measures to become a designated green community. This code went into effect in July of 2021. It also applies both to new construction and to renovations and additions on existing buildings. In late 2022, Wakefield officially became a green community, and we received about $189,000 in grant funding from the state for energy efficiency programs that benefit our town buildings, such as the project to install LED lighting in Town Hall. The third building energy code in green is the Specialized Energy Code, the subject of today's vote on Article 7, which applies to new construction only, not renovations and additions. So far, it has been adopted by 26 towns and cities in Massachusetts, representing well over 20% of the state's population. If Wakefield votes to approve this measure today, the change to the energy code for Wakefield would take effect July 1, 2024, to give our building inspector, other relevant municipal employees, and builders time to prepare for this change. We'll now spend a few minutes looking at the details of this new code. At the highest level, the Specialized Energy Code is a set of requirements pertaining to new construction only, requiring that buildings are either, one, all-electric, meaning they do not use propane, oil, or gas in the building; or, two, in the case that the building does use fossil fuels, it needs to be pre-wired for future electrification, and solar panels should be installed. Let's dig a little deeper and define some terms. For most of you, as Wakefield residents in existing buildings, this change would have no impact on your homes, as it does not change the requirements for renovations or additions of existing buildings. The Specialized Energy Code does not have any impact on historic buildings either. This change would have no impact on new construction of any all-electric buildings that are low-rise residential, that's under four stories, or all-electric commercial and municipal buildings, as there is no difference between the requirements of the already adopted Stretch Energy Code and the proposed Specialized Energy Code in those scenarios. This change does require new construction that uses fossil fuels, known as mixed fuels in the relevant building code language, to both pre-wire for future electrification and to install solar panels on available feasible space. It also does require new large multifamily residences, that's defined as four stories or higher, to meet passive house requirements. And for those large multifamily residences that choose to use fossil fuels, they must also pre-wire for electrification. What does pre-wiring mean? It means having sufficient capacity for future electricity use based on load calculations that assume future electrification requirements. It also means having dedicated circuits and plugs installed near fossil fuel equipment, such as your furnace, hot water heater, or stove, to enable future electrification of that equipment. This pre-wiring at time of construction is significantly easier and more cost-effective than having to rewire a home later to replace that equipment with electric equipment. Again, this change pertains only to new construction, where it's clearly easier to do the electrical work before the walls are closed up and painted than to rewire it in a finished house. The other term that needs definition on this slide is passive house. Passive house is a particular building verification program that's all about the energy performance and envelope tightness of a building. This standard can apply to any type of building, and it does not require the building be all-electric or net zero. Passive houses are designed to be extremely energy-efficient and comfortable because of greater insulation and specially-designed ventilation and airflow parameters. As such, they reduce the heating and energy demands, which is beneficial to building occupants, especially for passive house buildings that are built as affordable housing due to lower cost of utilities and maintenance. Many passive houses are being built around the state and country, including this apartment building in South Boston and a high-rise office building that just opened downtown. To be clear, the Specialized Energy Code does not require all buildings be passive house certified, just large multifamily residences. And it's one option to meet the energy code requirements for other building types. Okay, so what does this mean for you as residents in existing homes in Wakefield? First, by having more new buildings be energy-efficient, we reduce demand for high-cost energy supply on peak energy days, think cold snaps and heat waves. And this reduces the cost of energy for all residents, not just residents of these new buildings. Peter Dion, General Manager of the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, will share more about this in a moment. Next, if the town adopts a Specialized Energy Code, we become eligible for some additional funding incentives for new school buildings directly applicable to the high school project, which saves taxpayers' money. From a common sense standpoint, it's also much less expensive to proactively electrify a building than to retrofit it later. So for residents like you who may someday move into these buildings, you will have the benefit of lower utility bills, less maintenance, and won't have to pay the additional cost of rewiring if you someday decide to install a heat pump or electric hot water heater. As you heard, nearly 30 communities in Massachusetts have already adopted the Specialized Energy Code, and more are voting to adopt it every month. You'll hear more from Peter about the grid. But as our utility gets a growing proportion of its energy from clean sources, it reduces the carbon footprint of each electrified building. They're doing well now, but will get even better over time. Finally, this measure puts Wakefield on a path to achieve the Massachusetts' climate goals of net zero by 2050 and avoids potentially costly penalties down the road for noncompliance with those goals. We're running a little short on time, so we'll touch on just a few of the frequently asked questions that we get. First, does this measure increase the cost to build the new high school? No, because it was already designed to be all-electric, so it already meets the requirements of the Specialized Energy Code. Further, as mentioned before, it will become eligible for additional incentive funding if the measure is passed, which would save taxpayers' money. Oops, sorry. Second, can Wakefield's grid handle all these all-electric buildings? Yes. Wakefield's grid is resilient and reliant and can handle it. Additionally, the Stretch and Specialized Energy Codes are designed so that new buildings use as little additional demand as possible, especially during peak times. Does this increase the cost of new construction? Yes, minimally. The Department of Energy Resources estimates 1% to 4% cost increase for some building types and a decrease in other building types. Beyond that, federal, state, and local levels, there are numerous incentives at the federal, state, and local level to offset building costs. I'm sure there'll be plenty more questions to come, but for the moment, I'll pass the mic over to Peter Dion, General Manager of our utility, Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, and then we'll come back for questions.
I note that Mr. Dion is not a Wakefield voter. Is there any opposition to hearing from him? Seeing none, he is allowed to speak. This is part of the 10-minute presentation, I trust?
Thank you. I'll go quickly. Yes, as was said, one of the key drivers for all of our costs are those peak days, especially on the gas side, because we don't have, in the region and locally, capacity assigned to us to handle those peak days. So when we're looking for gas on those premium heat days, the cost is significantly higher, which drives all of our costs. So managing the growth of new construction, especially in the gas heat area, is beneficial to all ratepayers. As many of you may or may not know, the Board of Light Commissioners passed a moratorium on new construction of multifamilies five years ago to manage that growth to some extent. But as we continue to go, and it's only single families, that additionally benefits the ratepayers by continuing to reduce that peak. The cost of gas, again, is driven by what happens on the peak day. The commodity is whatever the commodity costs, and it's relatively stable. What happens on the peak day, the transmission to get that gas into our region, again, at a premium time, is very expensive, and that's what drives it for all of our customers.
Mr. Dion, we've reached the 10-minute limit. Can you try to wrap it up, please?
Sure. Previously, we, last year, when we were talking about the high schools, we shared a slide, and I'm resharing it, which basically shows the impact of an all-electric home versus a fossil fuel structure. And the fact that the table on the right shows basically that the carbon footprint of an all-electric home is significantly lower than that of a fossil fuel, which is intuitive to some extent. But as was mentioned, it also, as we drive towards our 2050 goals, which is that our power supply itself is net zero, we're also driving the overall grid. So what we're driving to is that if we make an all-electric home and we drive our electric supply to net zero, we are benefiting the environment in two ways. And then I'll go quickly. There was a question raised about whether Wakefield Gas and Light has the capacity to serve this new, you know, where we're driving towards all-electric. The answer is absolutely. One of the things that we've done in the past 10 years, obviously many of you saw, we built Wallace Substation up on Salem Street. Our capacity and our reliability for the next 30 years is, we are in excellent shape, probably better than most communities, to handle an effort like this, because the capacity that we added at the Wallace Substation enables us to serve this load and move, transition to an all-electric grid in the next 30 years very easily. So I don't know if there's any other questions, but let's, I'll wrap that up.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there any further discussion under Article 7? Mr. McLaughlin, you won the race.
Well, okay. I get to call Mr. Mullen, Moderator. Thank you. Couple of questions. Is the building inspector in the room? I have a couple of questions for the building inspector, if I could.
Benjamin Christopher, Inspector of Buildings.
Yeah. My question is, my understanding is, I know we've been talking new construction, but my understanding is with this new stretch code enhanced, is renovations off the table on this? Because I believe renovations are included, as opposed to including new construction. Is that true or not true?
Well, that's kind of a complicated question to answer, but I could tell you that some renovations are considered substantial alterations, which would be considered new construction.
My other question is, on continuing education for, if this got adopted, is this a, with the capacity of your inspectional services and your team, are you going to have to hire anybody else? Or is this going to be relatively easy and simple to do inspections? Or is this going to include a lot more extra manpower?
It is a, the energy factor now is more complex. So the possibility of additional help could be possible. At this point, it's hard for me to answer.
This goes back to the real reason why I wanted to postpone this, because I have got so many questions, I don't have enough time to write them all down from the presentation. But I would love to continue this some other time, because I just don't have enough, I don't have enough time. I can tell you, there's 18, as of 5/24/23, there was 18 towns and cities in Massachusetts that opted into this program, out of 351 cities and towns. And I can tell you, the towns, I'm looking at it right now, Arlington, Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Concord, Lexington, Lincoln, these are pretty well-to-do towns. Wakefield is, as far as the wealth goes, I googled a search this morning, Wakefield comes in at 118 from the top wealthiest town. I think this is totally unaffordable for a lot of people. We're going to make affordable housing pretty unaffordable if this thing goes through, unless we get some more education. This is what I believe, anyway. But thank you, anyway.
Any other comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Again, I agree with--
Could you please state your name and address?
Oh, sorry, I didn't know how to do it a second time. Marcy McCauley, 32 Walden Road. Again, I agree with Mr. McLaughlin. There is a lot of information to be processed, understood. We hear a lot of things about, nearly 30 communities have adopted this. It said 26 on the presentation. We don't have to make this decision today. It was also mentioned that the high school already made the decision to be 100% electric, so you have the option. If you want to build a home that's 100% electric, you have that option now. You don't have to force that option on every other person. So I believe that we need more time to learn more and that we should not be deciding on this article today. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Phil Renzi, 8 Morgan Ave. So I was going to ask about the substantial renovation that was just asked. I believe that is included in this, and the slide was misrepresented that it's new construction only. So I feel that that correction should be confirmed, or that that slide may have been a typo. My major concern with this is the pre-wiring. We're talking new construction, which will have new equipment, which will have a life cycle of, let's say, 15, 20 years if you maintain it. So we are predicting that in 15, 20 years, any wiring we have done today is going to be compatible with the technology then, and I feel like it's a gamble. You know, if we did something 20 years ago, like an audio system, you wouldn't even have an HDMI input. You know, things change. So I worry about these costs today with the expectation that they're going to save you costs in the future. It's sort of a dream. And I would like clarification on the substantial renovation part. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide that. My name is Michael Rossi.
Yeah, please state your name, and since you're not a voter, but we've already voted to allow you to speak, just state who you work for.
Sure. So my name is Michael Rossi. I'm an energy code specialist with Performance Systems Development, and we're contracted on behalf of the Department of Energy Resources. I'm happy to speak to the renovations question. So this specialized opt-in code is essentially an amendment to the Stretch Code, and the Stretch Code itself is already being followed by the town of Wakefield through the inclusion of being a green community. So when it comes to renovations, these requirements that are outlined are already being followed as part of the current energy code, and the Specialized Opt-in Code itself does not have any substantial impact on renovations. The requirements are the same as the Stretch Code. And the intent of this is to have the opt-in code essentially include all of the requirements of the Stretch Code plus additional requirements as well. So this project itself does not have, the Specialized Opt-in Code does not have any new requirements for renovations and additions. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Morning. John Chrisley, 19 Humphrey Street. I come to this discussion from sort of two perspectives. For 15 years, I worked for the State's Department of Capital Asset Management and the Energy Program, doing retrofits of major state facilities. So I think the two components to the specialized code that's really worth noting is the requirements for the increases in building envelope, which is walls, double-pane windows, roof insulation. Those guidelines drive high-performance new construction, and it makes it possible to build buildings that are either heated and cooled by air-source heat pumps or ground-source heat pumps. And you can see the market for air-source heat pumps is a mature market. You can see these vans all over Wakefield, Mitsubishi Electric, some of the other major manufacturers, and they've built this mature technology to be able to heat in cold climates like the Northeast. So on the economic side, I think adoption of this stretch code is technically very doable. It's happening, as we speak, in new construction and in renovations, where they do a substantial amount of insulation and window replacement already. And as far as the affordable housing component, which some people have mentioned, lower utility bills make housing more affordable for everybody. I have all kinds of fun insulating my own 100-year-old house, and every time I see the lower utility bill come in from Wakefield Gas and Light, I thank the insulation contractor on a daily basis. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Scott McCauley, 32 Walden Road. So I'm wondering, exactly what impact does Wakefield currently have on the environment, and what impact, what change is going to come up because of that, percentage-wise, for the environment? And are we just trading one for the other when we have, all the electricity comes from fossil fuel, and we're saying we can't have fossil fuel in our homes? If I want to spend the winter with my windows open in my house, that's my prerogative. If somebody wants to go further to incorporate all this into their building, they certainly can. We already have an extended program based upon communities in the state. So now we're putting an additional burden on people that want to build homes in Wakefield. With the overlay, which the maps they have, this is going to affect potentially hundreds and hundreds of homes as people convert to multifamily, because of the MVT overlay, if that goes through. We're just putting additional burden onto initial costs, which is going to drive the cost of homes up in Wakefield for future buyers, with stuff that may or may not be used, because they may opt to have fossil fuel and continue to use fossil fuel. So to add all that extra wiring into their home, at an expense to them, it just seems a little ludicrous. And I note that with the goal of achieving net-zero greenhouse gas emissions from the building sector no later than 2050, Wakefield is Wakefield, not Wakefield Light Department, it's Wakefield Light and Gas Department. So what does that do to our gas department?
Okay, so Mr. McCauley, you're asking questions you want answers to right now, is that right?
Yes, please.
Okay, and Mr. Dion, you can answer one or more of them?
Sure, I can answer a couple of them.
Please do.
First of all, in terms of if it's all-electric, Wakefield Gas and Light is currently 53% non-carbon emitting, and as I said, we have to reach 100% non-carbon emitting by 2050. So all the electricity that will supply these all-electric homes has to continue to reduce towards zero carbon emitting by then. In terms of our Gas and Light Department, there's a lot of looking forward to what happens to the gas side of our business. Right now, we understand that it's not going to change at all for the next 10 to 15 years, but what we have to do is manage our costs in that regard. So what's driving our costs right now are those peak days, and so the immediate impact is to try to cap the growth so that those peak days can stay under control. Going forward, there's a lot of study that's being done about what to do about the gas system as we evolve to 2040 and 2050. The gas system's not going away. It's going to transition over the next 30 years to cleaner burning gas, ground-source heat pumps. There's a lot of different studies and work being done for that 30-year look, but the immediate impact is that as we drive buildings to all-electric, we have a set number that we have to be at by 2030, by 2040, by 2050. So our electric supply is getting greener in that time.
But you've mentioned several times that it's a cost factor during peak times, and that gets passed on to us, but it's not an environmental factor.
Well, the result of it is that by using less gas and using more electricity, it is an environmental factor also.
I still think you're trading one for the other, because you need fossil fuels to create the electricity.
I just want to add that-
Hold on. It was, are you answering a question that was put behind? Okay, but please state the question and then answer it.
The question was about the environmental impact. So we just performed a greenhouse gas inventory for the Town of Wakefield and found that over 50% of our greenhouse gas emissions come from buildings. So this code is meant to reduce that greenhouse gas emissions.
So what percentage was that, and are those available to us? Because again, it goes back to Mr. McLaughlin not having all the information.
Yes, the results of that inventory are found on the website. You can go to our webpage. There's a presentation about it.
So, I'm sorry, what is the website?
You can go to the town's website and go to our committee page.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. McCauley?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any others, discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Denise Murray, 216 Lowell Street. And I guess my question is regarding the costs that we just talked about as far as the electricity. By making all of the new construction electric, with our move to electric vehicles, with everything moving to electric, what's that going to, what's going to happen to the existing housing costs for electricity? And what happens at peak times?
Mr. Dion, can you answer that?
I'll try. So peak times are a challenge on both the electric and the gas side. However, the focus, again, over the next 30 years, is to drive the electric supply from 50% carbon emitting to zero carbon emitting. So much of the energy and focus is on that side. Our electric rates are more than 50% cheaper than the neighboring communities that are IOUs. So I think in terms of the two different commodities, our ability to control what happens on the electric side for the next 30 years is much greater than our ability to control what happens on the gas supply. Because, again, the resources that are being expended on improving the electric supply over the next 30 years are going to be much greater than that on the gas supply. We're not taking new gas into our region. The ability to bring greater gas capacity into New England is not changing. So the cost of gas is going to go up. If either commodity goes up, the cost of gas is going to go up much more than the cost of electricity. But the reality is, electricity is going to be managed in a different way over the next 30 years. And from our perspective, as I said before, we have the capacity. The infrastructure investments that we've made over the past 15 years have now enabled us to be ready for electric vehicles, heating and cooling, and we're in a much better position than we are in the gas, because our limit on the gas peak.
And of our electricity that's being produced, where do we get it from? Like, what percentage is from fossil fuels?
Yeah, so we're 53% non-carbon emitting right now. So that includes wind, solar, hydro, as well as nuclear, which is non-carbon emitting. So that's 53% of our current supply. And as we move out, we have to be 75% by 2040. But our board is very aggressive, and we've actually, we're ahead of the goals. We're already at the 2030 goal, which is 50%. We're actually at 53%, and we continue to drive to get that, get that lower.
And, I'm sorry, do you know, do you happen to know what it takes to drive us down, to go 10% lower, so that we're at 63% or 73%? What's the cost of bringing in new sources?
So right now, it costs about 1.8 cents extra for non-carbon emitting, but remember, that's based on what's currently available for supply. So you could join our Green Choice program and have your house be 100% non-carbon emitting, because we would go procure our renewable energy certificates for that. If you look on our website, you could join Green Choice today and be 100% non-emitting, and that costs an extra 1.8 cents. However, that's based on what's currently available. And as I said before, the drive over the next 30 years is to have a much greater impact of non-carbon emitting resources. So that 1.8 cents has already come down about a third of a cent, just since we started offering the Green Choice option. It's come down from 2.1 to 1.8. So the availability of the green resources will drive that premium down. I hope that answers your question.
What does that mean for a bill?
So right now, if you wanted to go to Green Choice, that would be an extra 1.8 cents on your bill.
Per kilowatt?
Yeah. Right now, if you chose Green Choice, you'd be paying an extra 1.8 cents. But as we go forward, again, I think that premium is going to continue to drop, because most of the supply that's available is going to be in the Green Choice option.
But it raises my bill.
As of today, it does, yes. But again-
And in the future, you think that it's going to drop?
Well, I think what's going to happen is there's going to be a much greater percentage of new supply that is on the green side. Therefore, yes, it will, I don't see it going up. If it doesn't go down, it's going to stay the same. But the supply that's going to be available to us for everything that we do is going to be in that Green Choice variety.
And where will that come from? I just, I'm asking because I was looking up on different websites, what percentage of all electricity in the U.S. is produced from solar, from hydro, from nuclear? We're closing our nuclear plants.
Yeah.
And solar and wind and hydro produce, like, I want to say it was 10% maybe?
Yeah.
So we're talking about in 25 years, we're going to go from 50% to 100%? And right now, we're at about 10%?
So, again, we could debate whether nuclear plants are going to close or not, or what other resources that are, there's a scale of product called low, smaller nuclear plants that are going to be a continued source for that cadre of supply options. Again, what you're going to see is that there will be wind, there will be solar, but what you're going to see is additional investments in the technologies that drive that non-carbon emitting down. All our nuclear resources have been extended out past 2040, so the resources that we have available in Wakefield are going to be, continue to stay at a certain, you know, available to us, at least until the 2050 timeframe. But I think what you're going to see is additional resources in terms of smaller-scale nuclear-type options and other technologies, as we continue to also invest in wind, offshore wind, solar. I mean, our percentage of solar, just in Wakefield alone, has grown much over 20% from what we had even five years ago. So you're going to continue to see things like that, as well as investment in battery technology as well. We're at 3 megawatt, we had 3-megawatt battery, we were about to add another 5-megawatt battery, and so you'll see things like that, combining the solar with the battery.
Ms. Murray, I don't count, I do not count against you the time taken by persons answering your questions. Are you done?
I have just one more question. Why would we agree that we want to move everything to electric when we're not ready for it?
Well, I don't know if that's a rhetorical question. Mr.?
I think we are ready for it, as I said. Our supply is ready for it. I mean, we're in great shape.
Thanks. Now, I would like to hear from anybody who has not already spoken on the main motion under Article VII, and who wishes to be heard.
Hi, good morning. My name is Amy Lehman, 10 Fox Road. I just have a couple of process questions, and pardon my ignorance. It seems there's a lot of questions and healthy discussion. If this motion doesn't pass today, could they bring it back in the spring after more education is done?
Yes, they could.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is, if the motion does pass today, are we going to allow exceptions? Are they, a builder's going to hire lawyers and just come in and appeal to what board? Would that be a building inspector? Would it be zoning?
Well, as I understand it, okay, I'm speaking as town council now, this would be subject to the state building code. There is a state building code Board of Appeals. So that exists.
So they would be able to hire a lawyer and then, and ask for exemptions to this rule?
I can only tell you that there is a building code Board of Appeals. It's a state entity, we don't run it locally.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for the first time on this motion?
Yes, thank you. Bill Spalding, 42 Gould Street. I'm an elected official to the planning board, but I'm not speaking for the planning board. As an architect with more than 30 years' experience, I do, I would vote in favor of adopting the specialized energy code. And the reasons why is because I've been working in this for, I don't know, I think even in school I went worth, learning about sustainability, learning about building envelope closure, and understanding the enclosure and how important it is. I do understand the amount of effort it takes to learn more about this stuff. So it does take a lot of work, and it does trickle down to all of our trades as well. So I do have a question, is more about the Energy Park and Microgrid Project. What type of effect will that have on our supply? Because I don't think that's been spoken about yet. Thank you.
Is there anybody who can answer that? Mr. Dion?
Sure. Right now, it's a, for the town, for the town as a whole, it's a cost measure, because we'll be allowed to use the battery and the solar to manage our peak demand. So from the town's perspective as a whole, it'll be a benefit in that regard. In terms of the larger discussion that we're having around fossil versus electric, both high schools going all-electric has the benefit that I mentioned before around managing gas peak cost.
And just to follow up on that, thank you. Do we have any other plans for microgrid projects in the area that you're aware of?
Not immediately, but we are, there's plenty of things being discussed and looked at right now. We're trying to digest the big one first. We bit off of the, we tackled the big gorilla first. We have two major high schools, and so we're tackling that first. But the growth of this industry and where we're going over the next 30 years is going to involve much more of what you just described.
Right. I feel microgrids, after attending seminars and learning more about it, is really with the direction we need to go in.
Okay.
And again, I would vote in favor of this. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else for the first time?
I'm actually very generally supportive-
I need your name and address.
Tom Miller, 18 Park Avenue. Generally, very supportive of this idea. I think the problem that, with the conversation, is we keep talking about the environmental impact, but the only environmental impact we've talked about is carbon emissions. And if you look into carefully wind and solar and hydro, those have incredible impacts on the environment. And so one thing I worry about, and I'm a free-market person, so I would like people to choose what they want to choose, but having a heat pump, also known to many as an air conditioner, does not heat my home effectively, is incredibly costly. And I know by selecting that heat pump, I'm actually generating additional environmental impact beyond the gas usage. So the reason I'm concerned about this motion and making it mandatory is it takes away from the individual the opportunity to assess the actual environmental impact, and not just a carbon emission. I think that's wholly lacking in this discussion, and I just wanted to raise it as a point for the committee to consider. I realize it may not impact people who vote on this, but, again, if you look into mandating solar panels, the impact in the lifespan of those solar panels, and the environmental impact, not only in the U.S., but in poorer countries where they don't have the same environmental laws, has an incredible impact on the planet's environment. So, like many in New England, we focus in on our little local environment, and we are not thinking about the larger problem. Thank you.
No, sir. Mr. Rossi, there's no question before you. I take that as a statement, not a question. Anybody else for the first time? You may be heard, Mr. Rossi, later, but I want to hear for the first time from anyone who has not yet spoken on this motion. Yes, please.
Thank you. Daniel Lieber, 1 Elm Street. Just want to address to my neighbors two minor points. Well, one major, one minor. First, the minor point, if we choose to- First, the minor point, if we choose to not address this issue today, as has been suggested by some of our neighbors for indefinitely postponing, bringing this back in the spring or otherwise, even if we adopt it at a Springtown meeting in late April or May, there's a process by which all bylaws have to get approved, they have to go through the state, we have delays in the town, and so forth that are mandated just by the way our charter is written. That would actually create problems from a calendar perspective for an effective date of July 1st, which is built in and is one of the goals of the towns committees and has already been stated previously by our body as well with the adoption of the energy park is something that we're trying to support. That brings me to the second point, which is that this town has taken a stand that we care about being in community with others as well. We're in community with our neighbors, those of us in the room, those of us that are not in the room but live in the town, live in the region, live on the planet. And this is a part to actually support all of those. We've adopted an energy park, which will be environmentally efficient by reducing the peaks, reducing the uses of power generation when it is less efficient from an environmental perspective. So this is a way to continue that and being community in a small way, a larger way, and also lead the pack without being on the bleeding edge and being able to do this in a responsible manner. So I encourage favorable action. Thank you.
Mr. Betcher, I do not believe you have spoken on this motion. You spoke earlier on indefinite postponement. Please, your name and address.
Correct. Tom Betcher, 25 Wakefield Ave. I'd like to point out that in Massachusetts, between now and 2050, 27% of all new space will be new construction. Along with that, addressing the grid demands is, as part of this code impacting new construction and new construction only, would reduce, even though these buildings are electric or could be all-electric, would reduce our demand. And this also preserves the choice of fossil fuels. This does not preclude fossil fuels, but potentially the board may have to take action to, at some point around, put a new moratorium in as well. So, you know, depending on how these things go. And I also have-- there was a question around converting single families to multifamilies or people doing renovations and knocking down their homes. I'd like to ask the building inspector, how many new or existing homes have been-- by homeowners, have been knocked down and created as new construction buildings within the past, say, three to five years? Is there any permit stats on that?
Mr. DeChristopher, are you able to answer that question?
I am not. I can get that information, but I don't have that presently.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak for the first time? I see one hand. Nope, no, two. I'll get you next. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Ainsley McCall, 317 Main Street. And I just have one question. Could you give an estimate of what it would cost to install the solar panels required on a single-family home, three-bedroom, two-bath, that had mixed fuel use?
Is there anybody who can answer that question? Looks like nobody can answer the question.
As I understand, that would be required for anybody that had a gas range, for instance.
Can you answer the question? Answer any part of the question.
So the part of the question that I want to answer is that that would be only for-- in this proposal-- and maybe I'll go back to the details-- solar panels would only be required for a new construction, right?
New construction--
So your existing home, you don't need to do that. I would be happy to give you the cost that it was for my home in Wakefield, which is a three-bedroom, 1,600 square feet. It was approximately $20,000 total cost for the panels and installation. And then through incentives from Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, we received about a third of that cost back to us within very short weeks. Thank you, Peter. And from state and federal tax credits, about another quarter to a third back at the next tax filing. I have already saved-- so my net cost, once those rebates and incentives, was about $7,000 or $8,000 for my home. I have so far-- because I track very carefully-- I have saved about $3,500 in energy costs from my gas and light department bill. So I'm halfway to paying that off after three years.
And you're including batteries as part of that, right?
I have no batteries, no. So I sell my excess to the utility. Occasionally, that results in my having a negative bill from gas and light department. And I pay-- I use what electricity I generate when I am using electricity and the sun is shining. And I pay for the electricity that I get from the grid when the sun is not shining. I sell them back, the excess I'm not using.
And the specific requirement for solar panels, is that gauged by square footage? Is it gauged by, like a blow test?
Is there anybody who knows? Mr. Rossi.
Yeah, so the code requirement for mixed-fuel buildings, if it's less than 4,000 square feet of conditioned floor area, the requirement is a 4-kilowatt array. And if it's over 4,000 square feet, which is usually a larger luxury home, the requirement is enough solar PV to offset the home to get to net zero. So what that is, is there's a required home energy reading index score that you have to achieve before factoring in solar, which is basically like a miles-per-gallon sticker for a car but for a house. And that's included as part of a third-party verification system that is essentially part of the stretch code to meet the code requirements. It's one of the pathways. And for it, you have to achieve a HERS 42 prior to factoring in solar, and then a HERS 0, which is lower the score, the better, essentially net zero after factoring in solar. So you have to get from 42 to 0 for these-- just for these larger mixed-fuel homes over 4,000 square feet. If it's less than that, the requirement's a 4-kilowatt array. And to speak to your question on cost, I think ultimately it's up to the installer and just other aspects like that.
Yeah, we understand that cost vary.
Yeah, so I can't give specifics on that.
And the specific array that we just heard mentioned, how many kilowatts was that?
I wish I knew that off the top of my head. I think it's-- I think mine is 5 and 1/2 or 6. So the cost of a 4-kilowatt would be less, and the cost has even come down over the past three years since I installed mine. So I would expect that the cost would be lower for a 4-kilowatt system today.
Okay, that's my question.
All right. Mr. Dombrowski. This is here. This is fine.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm Ed Dombrowski, 15 Chestnut Street. I think this is a really important discussion that we're having here, and I guess the attorney of me stands out and says that the challenge is that you're hearing a lot of information, but you're also hearing it from the same folks who have worked really hard but are also advocating for a particular outcome, right? And so I think many of you here may not be fully informed of both sides of this. I think you're asking very important questions, some of which have been answered, some of which have not. And if you were to leave here today, I think there's probably a lot of more information you'd be interested in having before making this kind of decision. So with that, you know, I would just encourage everyone to consider the fact that-- you know, a few things here. A lot of references to new construction, but again, that's a nuanced term because new construction can, in fact, you talk about the level of substantial renovation that might happen. That could constitute new construction. That's a consideration. You hear a lot about cost savings, but you also hear the fact that as we're ahead of the curve in terms of looking for non-carbon emitting sources, we're at 53% now, that is costing you more money. So when you hear about a cost savings, I don't think we can be convinced that that ultimately is the case here. So I think that's an important consideration for everyone to keep in mind. MIT and Wentworth Institute of Technology actually did a study on this just recently, and I'm not a subject matter expert on this, but I can say that they identified that the stricter code, in order to come into compliance, it would take 42 years of cost savings in order to break even relative to where the technology is today relative to this. Now, that's not to say that this is not a good idea, but I think it is to say that there's a lot of deliberate consideration that needs to go on here. We're talking about affordability constantly in this community. There are so many younger folks who feel like they're priced out of living here in Wakefield. There's no question that as costs increase, and there will be costs that increase here, those will be passed on to the buyers in an already very difficult market. So I think that's something we really need to be thoughtful of when we're looking at our next generation and young home buyers for the first time. So I encourage all of us to keep an open mind about this, but perhaps to, you know, think about the idea of having some public forums. So some of the really important questions that were raised here today can be better addressed. You can perhaps hear other perspectives, not just the perspectives of those that are advancing a particular outcome. And I respect that, and I respect the work that the ESC has done. I respect what gas and light has said. But I think it has been revealing here to us already that, you know, it's not as clean-cut as it may have been presented as the questions have come out. And there are a lot of open questions still with that. And this will have consequences for us. As property values increase, which is inevitable because, again, you expect developers to pass on those costs to the purchasers, that means that property values will also increase within town, which means that property taxes, which are commensurate with property values, will also increase for you. So there's that aspect of it as well. So it's-- we're looking at this holistically, and really encourage everyone to give this some significant thought. I would encourage the ESC to have some forums on this with gas and light to really talk through the issues. This is not something that, if it's not decided today, cannot be decided in the spring. And very well, in the spring, people might be, you know, stronger in the resolve that it is important that we go forward on this. So this, you know, pushing this off to the spring by no means would suggest that the town doesn't have an appetite for it, but I think it would allow for all of us and anyone else who might be interested to make a more informed decision on something that will have significant consequences for all of us and any of our future neighbors for generations to come. So thank you.
Ms. Smith-Galvin.
I just wanted to add, we did have a public forum that was invited-- that was held at WCAT Studios, so you could have participated in public or on Zoom. So that recording is-- has been posted. So there was an opportunity to express any questions or concerns then.
Okay. There was no pending question. I'd like to reserve any further discussion from those who have already spoken once till everyone who has not yet spoken once is heard from. One person who's not been heard from yet is Ms. Smith-Galvin. Please state your full name and address.
Good morning. Julie Smith-Galvin, 28 Grafton Street, and Wakefield Town Council. I just want to respond to a few things that I've heard today. And actually, the first goes back to Article 1, when Town Administrator Mayo mentioned the town's wonderful AAA bond rating. And I think I'm going to put a question to you, Steve. Have you heard from the bond raters that our sustainability and green efforts and bylaws are actually helping our bond rating?
Like I said, they look at all those quality of life issues, so yes. In our discussions, we've had those. What role it played, I don't know.
Well, so this is becoming-- you know, this is an economic issue. It's an environmental issue. You know, obviously, we have people on different sides, but this is a direct impact on our bond rating. If we pass this, our high school is going to get more money. So I think it's really important to keep that in mind. I do want to reiterate that this has been discussed in multiple town committee meetings. It was presented to the town council. It's been presented in multiple environmental sustainability meetings. We did have a public forum with subject matter experts. And subject matter experts does not mean that we have an agenda. Yes, this is a complex issue. Energy code is a complex issue. Our budget is a complex issue. We just went through, you know, six articles that had to do with the budget, and no one asked any questions on it. Because you trust Steve, you trust the leadership, you trust Kevin Gill, who has done the work on it. So I do ask-- I acknowledge that this is a complex issue, but I will counter that there's been information out there. And this is a very small part of the energy code. We are building a lot of new construction in town. It's a consumer protection. How many people have lived in multifamily houses here in Wakefield, and they've been poorly, poorly constructed? I hear it from apartment dwellers all the time, poorly constructed. And so this does not leave it up to the market. This means that our consumers, our residents, our neighbors, our communities, who live in buildings that can be healthy, and they can also help the environment. So I really implore you to look at this as not just an environmental and economic, but really a health and consumer protection issue as well. Thank you.
There's a gentleman there who's been very patient. Please, your name and address.
Christopher Lewis, 11 Crystal Street. I'm a member of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, but speaking for myself. I just wanted to point out that as a member of the Commonwealth, we have a responsibility to remain aligned with the state's goals to reduce carbon emissions by 2050. This is one step that would help us do that. And we also recently became a member of the Green Communities Program, which is a valuable source of grant funding to support energy efficiency projects and other projects in our town and our buildings to reduce energy use. And one of the key requirements going forward for that Green Communities Program is the adoption of this specialized code. So I think this is one step we can do to remain in that program and move our town forward. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Kristen Weekly, 7 Robert Street. I just wanted to make a couple of comments as both a homeowner who has several-- or two properties in Wakefield with solar panels, as well as a realtor. Obviously, affordability is a huge issue. I think what this is going to affect is going to be properties that are probably going to be either higher-priced or subsidized in some way. But as somebody who has done a lot of energy-efficient improvements to my properties, I will say that when we're talking about affordability, I went from having, you know, incredibly high bills, I mean, to the point of almost $1,000 a month, to substantially lower ones when I insulated and I put in heat pumps and I put in solar panels. So when we're talking about affordability, it's important to remember a few things that, you know, when you have a property with a lot of these improvements, whether you're building a new construction property, which is going to be-- if you're building a new construction, single-family in Wakefield, it's not going to be within reach of many buyers. But also, you know, when we're talking to month-to-month costs, the better built, the better insulated, and the more efficient a house is, the more affordable it's going to be to somebody over the long term in terms of their energy costs anyway. Also, you know, as a realtor, it's important to remember that buyers determine market value. So whenever somebody is looking at a property, you're talking about increase in property values, I mean, a buyer has to value these things. And I believe that they are very valuable if they're well-explained. But, you know, in and of themselves, having a building that's well-insulated, unless it's disclosed, is not going to make a huge difference. So I think it's really important to just kind of keep all of those things in mind when we're considering this. I think it's really important for us in Wakefield to have properties that are, you know, well-constructed, well-insulated, efficient, and in line with surrounding communities, which I think we've done in recent years with having our, you know, insulation-- you know, our insulation credits, the credits for solar panels. All of those things have been very helpful, I think, in kind of bringing us in line with other communities that have mass save. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there--
Sorry, may I just offer a quick technical clarification of the last term?
No, not just yet. Is there anybody else who has not spoken once on this issue who wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Your name and address.
Jack Washall, 10 Richardson Ave. I'm chair of the Gas and Light Board, and I just wanted to mention that the Gas and Light Board has voted in support of the motion.
Thanks. Anybody else for the first time? Okay. Far be it from me to encourage wordiness on the part of anyone, but is there anybody who feels it necessary to speak for a second time? This gentleman had just asked, so please-- and then I'll get you, Mr. McLaughlin. Mr. Rossi.
Sure, thank you. Michael Rossi with Performance Systems Development. I just want to offer a quick technical clarification of something that was said previously. If you do-- if the town does not choose to adopt the specialized opt-in code, you will not lose your status as a green community. The stretch code itself is an aspect of the Green Communities Program, not the opt-in code. So if you don't adopt the code, it won't impact your status as a green community. But the Department of Energy Resources actually just recently created a higher-tier level of green community, which is the Climate Leaders Program. And adopting the specialized opt-in code is a prerequisite of joining that program, which provides more incentives and-- which provides more incentives and funding. So you won't lose your status as a Green Community if you choose not to adopt, but there is additional incentives available if you choose to adopt. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McLaughlin. And then, ma'am, have you been waiting to speak for a second time? Okay, you're on deck. Mr. McLaughlin.
Excuse me, Bob McLaughlin, 376 Water Street. Just wanted to reinstate that if I understood every single aspect of this code, I'd have to go through the building inspector's manuals and find out exactly every single aspect of this, which I don't have time for right now, but I certainly do before next spring. And I'd have some better questions when I did that. But I just wanted to let everybody know, if you're voting for this, you're voting for something that's completely unknown because that cycle, that code cycle that the building inspectors use, that gets reinstated every three years, that code cycle, that changes. There's additions, there's, we don't know what we're voting for, you know, when that happens because as a electrician, our code changes every, it's updated every three years. We're on the 2023 right now. As a electrician, we're mandated 15 hours of classroom time just to go over the changes. Every three years, 15 hours, it takes us to get through those changes. So when this thing, if this thing passes, you're voting for a code that, whatever it is right now, good luck because there's all sorts of things that they can throw in this thing going down the road. I just wanted to make sure everybody totally understood that. And as far as construction, renovation, everything else, and sure, a lot of the innovations that are coming down the pike here, yeah, it's going to be less expensive, hopefully, for us to maintain our homes, heating and cooling. But the upfront costs for a lot of the stuff that we're talking about today is just totally unavoidable for a lot of people. When you start looking at some of the proposals that they're in front of, particularly on this particular energy code. And again, there's, as of May of this year, there's only 18 communities, cities and towns that are involved with this thing, and they're pretty affluent. I'm just not so sure this is as affordable as the proponents are throwing out there. I think we need some more education. I'm really proposing to get this, if we could get this voted down tonight and come back in the spring with some more information. That would be my recommendation. That's just me, I'm just one voter, one hand. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and you're next.
Marcy McCauley, 32 Walden Road. I want to thank Ed Dubrowski for bringing you lawyer self today. That was very helpful. And I think it is a very complex issue, as Julie mentioned several times. It's a very complex issue. I heard you say that. So we should take some time to not only educate ourselves in the room, but give other people in this community that may not be able to be here for today for whatever reason, we don't know what those reasons are, to be able to also make a decision that would work for their family and their homes as taxpayers. And I'd like to say about the rebate, working for a plumbing company, I also processed, I can't even tell you how many $3,000 rebates for gas-efficient boilers if they met the 95% Aflue rating. So there were many gas rebates as well, and just to point that out. I also, speaking of gas, I noticed something right here in this book, and I just want some clarification on it. It says, "In fiscal year 2024, Wakefield will finally experience the new tax growth long forecasted from National Grid's Woburn to Wakefield Line Project to a tune of $1.4 million in revenue." That is a gas line, is that correct?
No, that's electric.
Oh, that's electric, okay. That's good to know because I didn't know that. Just a great example of what, I do remember the streets all being torn up and a lot of residents up in arms, so I assumed it was a gas line. It didn't affect me, thankfully. But there's another thing that I wanted to point out that's also in the book. In Article Seven, if you look under the Energy Code about midway through, it says that the Stretch Energy Code, which is the one we currently have, is a comprehensive set of amendments to the International Energy Conservation Code. So I think we're already doing a lot, and we're being responsible, and that we need to further be responsible to allow more residents and taxpayers of this town to understand and to review this article so everyone can make a decision that would be representative of the entire town. And I, last thing I just want to note, I did see to Mr. McLaughlin's point on this motion, Article Seven, where it says all future additions, amendments, and modifications thereto. So that had some questions for me, too, that it seems like it's kind of open-ended in some aspects. But at the end of the day, I just feel that it would not be fair to the taxpayers of Wakefield to adopt this at this particular meeting, particularly when it can be reintroduced in the spring. Thank you.
Yes. You may bring such a motion. Is it seconded? Okay. Motion to move the question has been made and seconded. It requires a two-thirds vote. The significance of it is that if two-thirds do vote in favor, then we will proceed immediately to a vote on the main motion. There is limited discussion on a question of moving the question. Any person who wishes to discuss it may do so for two minutes. Is there anybody who wishes to speak solely to the question of moving the question? Mr. Lieber.
Thank you, Daniel Lieber, 1 Elm Street. I recommend that we not move the question where there are only a few people who wish to speak. They are limited to two minutes in the second portion of the discussion itself. Let's hear the discussion where we've had a significant point of discussion about not having information. Let's get as much information as we can, and then we can actually proceed with an educated vote on behalf of our neighbors as fellow townspeople. We are the town meeting for the town. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Batcher, 25 Wakefield Ave. I was next in line to speak, and my motion was going to be to move the question, so I don't need extra time.
Thank you. Anybody else on moving the question only? Seeing none, we are ready, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Julie Scott, 4 Central Street. I do not want to move the question. This is one of the fastest town meetings I've ever been to. It's not even 10 o'clock. We will not be done without, we don't need much more time for this. I keep hearing my neighbors in my community, many of them have valuable questions. They deserve the time, and I'm glad they're here. A lot of people aren't, so I think it would be respectful to let everybody speak. Thank you.
Anybody else on moving the question? Okay, I'm going to ask for a show of hands. I suspect I'm probably going to need tellers, but let me just do this first by eye. All in favor of moving the question, please raise your hands. All opposed to moving the question? Yeah, I'm going to call for the tellers. Are we ready with the tellers? All right. Everybody who's in favor of moving the question, which again means that we would proceed directly to a substantive vote on Article Seven without further discussion, please raise your hand and keep it raised until you know your vote has been counted.
On moving the question, yes.
24. And what was it in the center? Okay. Now, everyone who is opposed to moving the question, please raise your hand and keep it raised until you know your vote has been counted. Oh, wow. 63.
How many in the sec, 26?
26.
So it's 21, 26, and what was the other one? Yeah, the total was 81 in favor of moving the question, 63 against. That is not a two-thirds vote, and so we are back on the main motion under Article Seven. Is there anybody who, first of all, let me ask, I think there's one individual who has not been heard once. Am I right? Okay, why don't you tell us your name and address?
Dennis Clarity, 1 Harvest Road. I'm, I'll be very brief. My brother went full-electric. He's got the solar panels, the electric car, and he hasn't paid an electric bill in 10 years. I mean, there are added costs to that. But, you know, as Bernie Sanders said, you know, he has, he has solar panels on his house, and he doesn't pay any electric bills. But it costs more to have the electric panels installed, but it saves you money in the long run. And most of the people that would benefit from this aren't here. They're probably not even born yet, but they will appreciate your wisdom in approving this because it will not only substantially doing this small part to save your planet, but it will also substantially decrease their future cost. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to be heard for the first or second time? Mr.? Oh, first time, okay, good. Please state your name and address.
Mike McLean, 19 Fairmount Ave. I live in probably a 150-year-old house up on the west side, and I'm kind of an all-energy guy. We have more house than we need, so we do what we can. And we have four heat pumps. When it's negative 10, one of the nights last winter, I wanted my oil tank as well. And we also have, I burn a quart a year, we do wood-burning stove insert. So I have noticed, though, that we have, get pretty good energy efficiency out of those four heat pumps. The cost of solar, I think, nationwide is dropping because the market is maturing. I understand the arguments about the world in general, but I think that the movement in solar is to go with rooftop units as opposed to some of these wind farms because of the environmental impact that they can have over acreage and the substrate of blow. To clarify one point, because I used to think an IOU is I owe somebody money. Pete Deion had mentioned IOU, that stands for independent-owned utility. We have one here, I think it's excellent. I think the work they're doing is excellent. I think we have kept our energy costs lower. They are ahead of the grid, or ahead of the environmental needs for these RECs, these renewable energy credits, but the more we do, the more of those we're going to get. If nuclear goes totally offline, we'll need even more because right now, we do have nuclear as part of our energy mix. So I'm somewhere in the middle on this, but I think that I am, I'm hoping that we don't reach the question, as my friend Bob McLaughlin said, this evening. I hope we're not still here. So I'll be brief. I am supportive of this motion for the additional, addition to the Stretch Energy Code. And I think it's a wise move on our part because we do have to get by 2050 to that net-zero number. So there are going to be challenges along the way. I've often heard, too, you know, we don't maintain our buildings, we don't do this, we don't do that. If we're building them with a tighter envelope from the get-go, yes, it may cost more, and I don't believe that housing prices are going to come down as a result of this. That's perhaps where I may differ with some others. However, that energy efficiency is going to save all of us money, and it's going to be good for, what we all know is happening, right? I mean, my neighbor last year was waiting for the lake to freeze over so his son could skate. You know, something's happening out there, and we need to address it. So I support the motion. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Oh, for the second time?
I just have.
You need your name and address again.
Denise Murray, 216 Lowell Street. My question really is regarding what the impact of actually voting for this is on the cost of the high school. I think, Ms. Galvin, you mentioned that it would impact the cost, and I don't remember seeing any numbers anywhere saying, oh, if we vote for this, your property taxes will change, this will come down, this, like, could you address that?
Ma'am, you can, you can address that, right?
Yes, thank you. The.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry, Tiana Valdisch, 28 West Water Street. The top Q and A here, so the high school is already designed to be all-electric, so there wouldn't be additional cost in building the high school to meet the Specialized Energy Code if we adopt it today. The even better news, right, so that's good news already. The better news is that if we adopt it, then we become eligible for some additional incentive funding that would go toward the cost of the high school. I don't have the number for how much? 3%,
3% of the overall cost of building the high school?
That's my understanding.
That's coming from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They're offering all new school buildings that meet the Specialized Code an additional 3% incentive.
And do we meet it with the existing code?
We do meet it, but we would get that additional funding if we adopt the Specialized Code.
Does that answer your question?
I think that I'm still confused a little bit on it. We have code in place, right? And if we, will we get funding because of that code?
We won't get funding because of the current Stretch Energy Code. We will get additional funding if we adopt the Specialized Energy Code because the high school is going to be all-electric.
And is that 3% on the total cost, total end cost of building the high school?
That is what I'm told.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else the second time, sir? Go ahead.
Scott McCauley, 32 Walden Road. So as, I was surprised to hear that, so if this does not pass today, then we will not get that additional 3% on the high school. So there is an incentive for it to be. So there is an incentive for it to be passed today?
That's correct.
Okay. Which, okay. I was reading one of the slides, and it said, and it's been changed since now, if the house is built and uses fossil fuels, that you would need to install pre-wired electrical and solar panels. If somebody builds a new home and they want to have a gas stove, are they then required to pre-wire the entire house and to add solar panels?
If you're using any fossil fuels, you'll need to pre-wire and add solar.
So if somebody installs...
For a new construction of residential.
An eight-hundred to twelve-hundred-dollar gas stove in their new construction, they would be on the hook for a minimum twenty thousand dollars for solar panels, and possibly up to ten thousand dollars in pre-wiring their home for a twelve-hundred-dollar gas stove.
I don't know all those costs are correct, but this is the requirement for new construction. If you want to use any type of fossil fuel in the house, you need to pre-wire, which saves money down the road, retrofits, and also install a, a minimum amount of solar panels.
Well, we know that, as was stated earlier, it was twenty thousand dollars upfront cost for the solar panels, and I know there was rebates, but at a minimum, it's twenty thousand dollars for eight to twelve-hundred-dollar stove. I just think that we already have adopted a Massachusetts code that is higher than a lot of communities, and that we're putting an additional one on top of that, potentially to get a three percent savings on the high school. I'm just wondering, as a homeowner, we have the option to do all these things with our home. So we're already at a, at a higher minimum level, and now we're asking anybody building a new home, or in, in, in a new construction phase where you're at a certain percentage over that you need to outfit, like I know this one on Lawrence Street, there's a big, huge home that's getting all renovated. I'm sure that they would be required to do this. And so I, I'm just wondering, why, why are we pushing people, adults in the room that own homes, to further increase their costs when we're already meeting higher than a lot of other areas for an international code and not a national code, or even a state code?
I just want to reiterate, this will be no cost to existing buildings.
It will.
No cost for additions or renovations.
If you're renovating over a certain percentage of your home, it's considered new construction, of which then you would be required to do all this. Is that correct, Mr. Building Inspector?
Okay, you're, sir, McCully, address any questions through me, please.
Okay.
You have a question?
If we could ask the Building Inspector, if, if a certain percentage of construction is considered new construction on a home...
Okay. Miss, Mr. DeCristofora, are you able to answer that question?
So I could tell you that DOER implemented this portion of the energy code, and there's still some confusion on the Building Inspector's end on what the ramifications are, but it is true that some, some additions could revert to new construction codes, as well as additions. I mean, maybe we can have the consultant answer that question, but, but there are, again, addition, additions over a certain percentage or a certain level of alterations could be considered new construction.
So certain alterations and not additions, meaning if you wanted to redo a certain percentage of your home, and it's over, I don't know what the percentage is, but then it could be considered that you have to meet new construction code, which would then fall into this guideline?
Relative to the Specialized Code, yes.
Okay, does that answer your question, sir, or do you...
Yes, it just means that if somebody has a substantial renovation on their house, then they would fall under this category. And if somebody wanted to add a gas stove, or say, a gas water heater, to their home, that they then would be required to pay an exorbitant cost to meet this new code, which falls on the taxpayers of Wakefield.
Okay. Mr. Rossi, did you, were you trying to answer that question, too?
Yeah, I believe so.
Do you need to speak still, or...
Yeah, I was just going to say, Michael Rossi, again, so speaking to that point on if a certain amount of renovation qualifies as new construction, I do think that is still mixing up the stretch code and the Specialized Opt-in Code. I believe the stretch code has that requirement in Chapter Five relating to existing buildings, and sort of what would qualify as renovation, addition, that kind of stuff. And then for the Specialized Opt-in Code, it's only for buildings that qualify as new construction. So existing building requirements, any upgrades or renovations or additions, go under that existing building provisions, and those provisions have to, as part of the stretch code, follow some specific requirements of the new, energy efficiency requirements of the new code, but that's not necessarily relevant to the Specialized Opt-in.
Then there would be a conflict in the two codes, because if one says additions, and one says new constructions, but where an addition could be considered new construction, then you're still falling under this guideline.
Well, the, in the section for additions in the code, it references the specific requirements of new constructed buildings that they have to follow. So it's not necessarily a conflict, because the code itself points to the specific provision of new construction code that an addition would have to follow, for example.
Okay. Again, it would be helpful to have all this side-by-side and the information out, so that we can all review it. And I think, I, I'm not voting for this, because I think it's going to add an, an additional burden upon the, the builders in Wakefield, which prices keep going up and up, and for those who own homes, it's, it's a good thing. For those trying to buy into Wakefield, or build in Wakefield, it's, it's terrible. It just keeps driving the costs up in town, so.
Okay. Anybody else for the first or second time? Yes.
Joe Tavano, twenty-three Eden Street. I'm looking for clarification. We talked about three percent for the new high school if we go with the Specialized Energy Code. Is that three percent off the cost already, or is that, it's going to cost three percent to increase?
No, it's a three percent incentive off the current cost.
And what is the cost to meet the Specialized Energy Code?
There would be no additional cost to the high school to meet the Specialized Energy Code.
So no additional cost, and we'd get three percent off the...
Yes, we would get a savings.
Okay. Second statement, not really a question. We are, anybody can do this, Specialized Energy Code. It doesn't need to be mandated, and it's just going to increase the cost as of, as a builder in Wakefield who's done twelve-plus units, most of them rentals, that cost is going to be passed on to the renters, and this is an affordability issue. I mean, you're already, they're already paying two thousand for a one-bedroom, thirty-two hundred for two bedrooms. Those costs are just going to get passed on to, to renters and hurt the affordability. When something that, anybody who wants to build, a lot of us try to do the best we can, and, and will do, and go above and beyond. We just don't need to be mandated. We don't need another regulation. It's not a question.
Okay, there was another person, no, you, there's no pending question. There was a, another person, though, who wanted to answer the question about high school costs. Mr. Dombrowski.
Hello, Ed Dombrowski, fifteen Chestnut Street. I've spent a lot of time with MSBA, and so I wanted to clarify something here, and I think it goes to show the complexity of what we're talking about here today. You heard three percent. That, that's actually not accurate. The MSBA has a rather complex formula in determining ultimately how much it will fund a particular project for, and as we all know, the MSBA only pays a portion of our high school project. The number three is in a percentage, and not a percentage of, of cost. The number three is what's considered incentive points. So the MSBA has a number of different factors that they look at, and the more points you get, the more favorable their support of your project will be. So this particular code constitutes three incentive points. That does not mean three percent of the project cost, or three percent of the MSBA's reimbursement of the project cost. And incentive points can be any number of things. You, you get, for example, two percentage points by simply having a thorough, long-term maintenance plan in place, so that you increase the longevity of a lifespan of a building. So I think just, this just goes to show us all that there, there are a lot of good questions being posed here, and a lot of uncertain answers right now. And we all want to make an informed decision here, right? And it's important, we all have accurate information to make that decision. And so I would just encourage everyone, from a process standpoint, keep in mind that if you were to vote no today, that does not mean that you oppose this. The Environmental Sustainability Committee could, and I would encourage should, bring that back after more dialogue on this issue, because there's a lot of nuance to this. So then come the spring, it can be, it can be heard again. So if you raise your hand no, you should not be perceived as against this. You should be, you could be perceived as against it, or you could be perceived as wanting to have more information to make a fuller decision. And the more I hear, the more I'm concerned about the information flow, and, and more information needed.
Mr. Dombrowski, you're just answering a question here. Okay, so anybody else for the first or second time? Yes, sir.
Andrew Hedberg, ten Maple Way. I am not an expert in any of the sort of energy processes, but in my understanding, from my own research and things like that, if we're really focused on improving building envelopes, that should really help in terms of peak demand, especially for electricity, because there's just a lower overall demand, especially as we're shifting and sort of expanding this new MBTA zoning opportunity, and there's going to be a lot more development that ends up happening. And so I see this as putting a little bit more in terms of upfront costs, which I do recognize most of that's going to be covered, or like, paid for by developers, which will then, then be passed on, right? That is part of value of anything. But especially when we're thinking about affordability, the idea of balancing and lowering the cost on the monthly basis for utilities, which can be much more variable for people when you're already spending, we're already spending so much money in order to, every month, just in order to pay for housing, that the idea of having a much more variable additional cost without these sorts of environmental opportunities makes it less affordable in that moment. And so I think I'm very much in favor of this. This is an opportunity to really focus on putting an investment in now for the future, with a focus on making things more affordable on a day-to-day basis, when we're really scrounging for that extra bit, to make sure that we're able to pay our rent, pay our mortgage, et cetera, and having that spike of costs, and really thinking about building affordability into this future plan, when we're about to have a lot more development, which I'm in favor of in terms of bringing, making Wakefield a much more affordable place, as hard as that's going to be, and maybe it won't actually lower things, but hopefully it will slow the rise in costs. But putting this in place, I think allows us to, like, really save some of that money and make Wakefield more affordable. And I think also, even if we're not getting exactly three percent back on this high school, like, any savings we can have there is really beneficial, again, for affordability. So thank you.
Anybody else for the first or second time? Yes, sir. Second time?
Yep. You've got first over there?
Yeah.
I'm happy to defer to a first.
First, first time, sir?
Yes.
And what's your name and address?
Ali Atwi, fifty-eight Emerson Street, and I'm a non-voting member here today. So...
Oh, okay. If you're a non-voter, you can only be heard with the permission of the meeting. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, you may proceed, sir.
So I'm the chairperson of the Wakefield Youth Council, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself today. And as a youth leader in this town, and from the research that I've already done on this proposal, while I do believe that there are important questions being asked here today in regards to affordability and how this will affect the town in the short term, I believe that for the future generations, I believe that this is a step of, a step in the right direction for the future generations in regards to energy efficiency, and I believe that this will result in more sustainability and more responsibility on the part of the town. So I do recommend favorable action on my personal behalf. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Second time, sir?
Second time. Eighteen Park Avenue. Another first, come on over.
Hi, my name is Benny Wheat. I live at forty-four Miriam Street. I just wanted to invite us to recognize and really know that environmental sustainability and affordability don't need to be mutually exclusive. They, there are mechanisms that our town has pursued and can continue pursuing to increase affordability in our town, and I think it's a, I think it's a distraction to think that affordability and sustainability are at odds. So I just wanted to kind of put that mindset out there.
Anybody else for the first time?
It's my first time on this motion. My recessions, forty Richardson Street. I first want to say, I, I think it's pretty offensive, the number of times people have said, "This is a complicated issue, and we can't possibly understand it." I mean, I have a little confidence in the body that chooses to show up. I have attended ESC meetings, I have attended public, I listened to the public forum, I thought it was really great content of information. I think there's been a lot of discussion here. And every time somebody comes up and says, "This is complicated, and we can't possibly understand it," it's kind of like, give me a break. I mean, we are educated people. We are people who choose to come to town meeting. We've been sitting here for hours, talking about this back and forth. And so I just want to personally say how offensive that is, every single time somebody stands up and says that. I want to say, like, it's also, this is kind of not a, I mean, I understand it applies to all new construction, but really, over and over again, on the Wakefield community groups, on the Facebook groups, we talk about these big buildings that are going up around town. Those people aren't here, right? The developers don't live in town, right? They're not, they're, it's not, they don't have a voice here, but we have a voice in how those buildings are going to function, and how, I mean, what is the impact of those giant buildings on our community? And they have a huge impact in a lot of ways. But one way that they can have an impact is that they can be built smarter, right? They don't have to drive up all of our electric costs, they don't have to drive up all of our gas costs, they don't have to drive up all of our sort of carbon emissions that occur in our community, because we have a chance here, through our building code, which is maybe the wonkiest of tools that we have, but it is a tool that we have, and we have a, an opportunity here to say, we, we understand that building is coming to our town, but our buildings are going to be smarter. Our new construction is going to be smarter to support the goals of our town. And so we may not be able to control all of what happens with our future development as much as people would like to, but we do have a voice here, a way to say, if you're going to build here, you're going to build according to our standards, and according to our goals and our vision, and we're going to all make Wakefield a better place because of it.
Yes, sir.
Tom Miller, eighteen Park Avenue. So with all due respect, I've heard the Building Inspector say, "It's not clear, it's confusing." This isn't saying that we're not smart enough to understand this. I also heard the gentleman, I believe your name is Mr. Rossi, and I apologize if I got that wrong, that he believes certain things about what the documents say, that he was quoting. He believes, doesn't mean I know. And I'm, I'm sorry, but honestly, having one public forum and saying that's enough with all this discussion isn't enough. I don't know the process for town meeting, but I would like to make a motion from the floor that this issue be tabled, and that we have a minimum of two additional public forums, if that's allowable.
Uh, no, it's not allowable. There's already been a motion for indefinite postponement. That's failed at this point. There are two options before you. If you're against the motion, just vote no. If you're in favor of adoption of the Specialized Energy Code, vote yes.
Okay, thank you. So what I would say is, Mr. Dombrowski, I appreciate your comments. Again, as I said earlier, I'm not totally against this. I have a PhD. I've studied these issues a lot. I am well-educated, but I do have questions. And so I really would implore my fellow citizens, all of you, to consider delaying this motion or rejecting it for now and having a public forum. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Dennis Clarity, One Harvest Road. Getting back to the high school, the new high school, does anyone know the cost of building the high school?
Is there anybody who can speak to that? Mr. Chines?
Yes, sir. The total cost is two-hundred-eighty million dollars, of which a portion of that is funded through the Mass School Building Authority.
Okay. And that, going with that three percent, with the approximate three percent that the town will save, so that adds up to like nine million dollars if we don't pass this thing tonight?
So per Counselor Dombrowski's point, the, the calculation, the formula for calculating the Massachusetts... the Massachusetts School Building Authority's contribution to the project is actually really complex. So I certainly can't on the fly give you a dollar number as to what the impact is of that component of it. However, it does factor into the reimbursement, and so, as we think about, you know, the specialized energy code, and as we think about what the Mass School Building Authority would fund, there absolutely is an incentive. Again, there are probably, you know, two dozen, three dozen different variables that go into the formula, so I certainly couldn't off the fly give you an exact dollar number.
So, about $9 million we would lose if we fail to pass?
No, Mr. Clardy, let's shy away from that, because you've already heard now a couple of times that we can't give you a definite dollar answer.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Karen Phaler, 222 Lowell Street. I just want to bring a slightly different perspective to the discussion. Part of it has to do with my age. I'm almost 83 years old. I will not experience much of either the cost or the benefit of this particular vote, so my perspective is different. These issues, I can tell, are very technical and complex, and are worth, you know, this kind of thoughtful discussion. However, I think, coming to discussion six months from now, I think it will be similar to what we're hearing tonight. The big question, I think, over time, to make these kinds of changes for future generations is gonna be expensive, and there will be certain gains. Those are the big questions. And personally, I question whether there's gonna be a big difference in how any of us see this, this basic question, six months from now? And the big thing is to get our heads around what's happening in our community, in our country, in our world, and that's hard. That's harder than the complexity, is to say, you know, it's gonna cost a little more, but I think for future generations, we have to start. And there are wrinkles that have to be filled, you know, worked out, but the important thing is making that movement for future generations, so I will be voting in support of this, of this motion. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Kathy, Kathy Shine Kane, 33 Elm Street. I would like to reiterate what the previous speaker said, with regard to what may happen if we decide to take the advice of several people and vote "no" now, so that we can get more information for the spring town meeting. Based on my experience at previous town meetings here and in other towns, I doubt very much that there would be anything new in the discussion. I've heard a number of arguments against this motion. Some of them have been reasonable and have informed me, some of them have been way too much in the weeds, way too much involved with the impact on an individual idiosyncratic situation. What I am persuaded by is the fact that this proposal has been vetted by a number of town entities, people whom we have voted for, and in that vetting process, people with expertise that I do not have, that many of the individuals who have spoken here do not have. People who have that expertise have contributed to the rationale for this proposal. For that reason, I am persuaded by the proposal itself. Do I love everything about it? No. But I am persuaded that the work has been done. I have not been persuaded by the arguments against.
Yes, sir.
Jim Hogan, 87 B Gould Street. I'm an elected member of the planning board, but speaking on my, on behalf of myself and not the board. I've been deeply conflicted about this proposal since I heard about it. I'm someone who works professionally in construction and in development, and has seen impacts of the specialized opt-in energy code on projects that are currently in the development pipeline, in communities that this is going into effect, or has gone into effect. I've seen projects that were being permitted, and were on the line of if this is gonna be impacted in an effect or not, and seen cost premiums of approximately 10% on projects that were gonna be permitted previously, and then have the specialized opt-in energy code. With that being said, life is about trade-offs, and we have to think about our additional costs that are being incurred by investing additional infrastructure dollars into the buildings that were coming online in the future. So one of the other previous members mentioned, and is a stat I've heard before, between now and 2050, probably about a quarter of our building stock is gonna be new construction between now and then. So, if we invest the time and the money to make sure that we have energy-efficient buildings by adopting the specialized energy code, are we gonna regret that decision in 2050? And I would argue, no. I think that we're gonna say, "We spent the money, and we made a long-term investment in our housing stock to bring down emissions. We gotta work through a lot of details on our electrical grid, and there's a lot of work to be done. We have a lot of smart people who are gonna roll up their sleeve and really work on it, but I think it'd be shortsighted if we didn't think about, are we gonna make a decision that we're gonna regret at a later time, because we didn't spend the time and the effort to roll up our sleeves and really do the hard work to invest in our existing building stock, and we can meaningfully address climate change and address our carbon emissions?" So, I, while I understand the short-term pain, and probably will experience it directly in my business, I recommend favorable action.
Anybody else for the first or second time?
Hi, second time, Ainsley McCall, 317 Main Street.
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Ainsley McCall, 317 Main Street. I think a lot of what we're talking about here is, or what I want, is to have affordable energy and reduce the impact on the environment in the future. And it's my understanding that the majority of the homes here in Wakefield are not even up to the existing stretch standard that we have if they were rebuilt today. So, to get to where we want to be, you know, a lot of us are going to be wanting to make improvements to our homes over the years. We're going to add insulation and make our renovations, and given that there's not a clear line between where our renovation ends and a new, new construction begins, it's not really easy to distinguish between Article VII and our existing code. I'm sorry, can people still hear me? I got part of the microphone. So my question, I guess my concern is, since this decision has a really huge impact, and it's hard to tell the difference between which, would going to this actually discourage people from making their homes more efficient in the future? By adding a burden of cost, or adding a burden of regulation for people that want to do, maybe not tear down their whole home and replace it, but they want to do something good for their utility development, something good for the environment?
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak for the first or second time? I see no hands. Therefore, I believe we are ready for a vote, and boy, are we going to use tellers. Let's have the tellers down here. If there are members of the youth council here who are therefore not member, not registered voters, I remind you, please do not vote. And let me just remind the meeting of what we are voting on. The main motion under Article VII is to adopt the specialized energy code. If you vote "yes," that is a vote in favor of adopting the specialized energy code. If you vote "no," that is a vote against adopting the specialized energy code. This is a majority vote. Okay. All people who, all voters who wish to vote in favor of the main motion under Article VII, that is, who vote in favor of the specialized energy code, please raise your hand and keep it raised until you know your vote has been counted. Everyone, all voters who are, yes, who are opposed to the main motion under Article VII, that is, those who do not wish to adopt the specialized energy code, please raise your hand and keep it raised until you know your vote has been counted. Those voting in the affirmative, 109, those voting against, 33. The motion passes. Mr. Chines, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you very much. I move that we dissolve this town meeting, with thanks to our temporary moderator, WCAT. With thanks, as always, to WCAT, Town Clerk Betsy Sheeran, and thank you to everyone who attended and participated this morning.
Okay. Thank you.